Ms. Oliver, will you take the role?
Dr. Kavasos.
President.
Ms. Chen.
President.
Mr. Hosang.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mr. Riffel.
Here.
Mrs. Ortega.
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley and Mr. Riffel.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Kavasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
All right, and we will move on to our one and only agenda item, which is our FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget discussion, and I will turn it over to Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'm going to start with some information on health insurance, and Dr. Keever's going to introduce our special guest this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good evening, members of the school board. We have invited Mr. Greg Snow from USI to provide the board with some information regarding health insurance trends regionally, as well as the process that the school division has been following with regard to the request for proposals on healthcare. I think that the school division has really taken a strong look at our healthcare options and providers, and want to ensure that you are familiar with those items that we're studying. So, Mr. Snow, welcome. Look forward to the information.
Thank you, Dr. Keever. Chairman Ortega and Superintendent Lieutenant Herron, thank you for having me here, along with ladies and gentlemen of the board. We do appreciate the trust you put in us and your partnership. Just want to make sure you knew that upfront. Gwana was not able to join us tonight. She's actually at home sick with one of those stomach flus, so I will take the brunt of it today. I am going to skip over some of this today because I know that you all can read some of these pages, and I don't want to bore you with it since we do have limited time. But we'll, I'll skip over the USI Insurance Services Overview. It's pretty straightforward. We have a lot of public sector in Virginia. We understand your business, and when it comes to local choice, I'm intimately aware of local choice back to its inception in the early nineties. We'll talk about some healthcare trends, and then, as Dr. Keever said, a little overview of the process, a little overview of local choice, and then we'll talk about next steps. Need to read about me. There's a little bit about USI. We have about ten thousand employees. One of the largest broken consulting firms in the country. Again, just some public sector. A lot of these are regional that you're very familiar So, some of the things we heard, your senior leadership team, and it's been a pleasure working with Dr. Keever, Renee, Tim, Emily, and then the selection committee throughout this whole process. They've been wonderful to work with. Some of the things that we heard you all say was obviously containing cost, building strategies around that cost, trying to enhance the wellness programs and implement programs that can help contain cost. Data. It's tough to make decisions without data. We believe that in what we call three D, data-driven decisions. So, obviously, obtaining data, we think, is very important to build strategies and help contain costs. And then, obviously, service. We're here to provide excellent service and really help you all attain your goals. Healthcare trends. Dr. Keever asked me to put together a little bit about what's going on with healthcare trends. We'll talk a little bit about carrier pricing, and then some regional, specific public sector to this specific region that I'll share with you. Some of the things driving trend, a lot of these things you already know. Plan design, whether we have a rich plan design or less rich plan design, the type of funding, whether you are fully insured or self-funded. You're currently quasi-self-funded, sort of fully insured with local choice, and we'll go into that a little bit. Network discounts impact costs. We do have different discounts with different carriers, and even within carriers, they do offer different discounts. Sometimes they offer some additional cost savings. Pharmacy pricing, I think everybody's very familiar with what's going on with pharmacy pricing, especially with the GLP-1s are impacting costs pretty significantly. And also, some of the gene therapies that are coming out that are life-changing for folks, but they are extremely expensive, million, two million, four million dollars. That is certainly driving our costs up, not only just on claims, but also driving the reinsurance costs up that cover claims above your reinsurance that you purchase to write off those claims. We are an aging population. We do continue to age. Your large claimants do have an impact on your overall, and I forgot to turn that off, I apologize. If you do have some large claimants, that can impact your cost. Geography is, we have different cost factors, not only from a carrier and a provider standpoint, but geographically, we have different health risks geography-wise, especially in the south, and a little, I would say, a little bit more southwest, towards Texas, even worse. But demographics, male, female, again, the age, and then reinsurance pricing and limits. So, those are just some of the things that are driving costs. Costs are expected to increase in twenty-twenty-five at levels we haven't seen in a few years. Things that are driving that are things that are pretty common for us, cancer, diabetes, musculoskeletal, prescription drug, as I mentioned. Mental health has been on the rise since COVID. We have seen a significant increase in an opportunity to really try to broaden those networks since folks are having some difficulty accessing providers. Also, the providers and dental providers, doctors, hospitals, and dental providers are all requesting significant increases in their reimbursements. So, as those contracts come up for negotiations, those are some battles that are occurring. Some of the strategies employers are going to look at are maybe narrow networks, potentially eliminating the GLP-1 for weight loss. A lot of folks do not cover GLP-1 drugs for weight loss. You all actually do cover that currently because it was required under the local choice program. That certainly has impacted costs. Limited pharmacy formularies, which is really just saying we're limiting the drugs on a formulary that can help save costs. And then, increased deductibles and copays. I'm not saying this is what you're going to do, but these are things that some folks are considering. And certainly, we're a big advocate of data, and with that, developing strategy is that we can more, in a more meaningful way, engage our employees so that we can improve their overall health. If we can improve their health, obviously, that helps mitigate costs, might not reduce your costs, but it helps mitigate costs. This is the Kaiser Foundation survey that they've been doing for many, many, many years, and I just wanted to pull out some of the inflation factors. You can see as a comparison there, going back to two thousand and nineteen. And as you can see, in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, we are seeing acceleration in healthcare costs. Part of that might be due to delayed care during COVID, and we're seeing more significant cancer diagnoses across the spectrum of our clients. So, that's certainly driving some costs. You can see overall inflation there. I'm glad to see we are coming down from where we were in two thousand and twenty-two, and then workers' earnings to the far right. So, just a good comparison, but obviously, our big focus for Kaiser is on those healthcare costs that are increasing. You all have taken some significant increases. If you look at your two thousand and twenty-three, not too bad, but your two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, you've taken some significant increases in your healthcare costs. The carrier, carriers are pricing. They look at your claims. They're trying to trend forward, and then they're developing premiums. We're seeing those trends range from around eight to ten percent on medical, and nine and a half and twelve percent on prescription drug. Cell phone clients that we have are running better than the carrier trends, and the reason being is carrier trends, they build margin in. Those are used for basically fully insured groups, and they're in business to make money. If you look at the stock prices of those companies, I don't invest in them because I'm a benefits consultant and don't want to be invested in them, but they have performed very well. So, they're there to make money. So, obviously, cell phone helps carve out some of those margins. It also allows you to negotiate better fees, negotiate rebates, or look at potentially carving out programs where it might make sense, where they're more competitive vendors that can help mitigate your costs. And just providing a more strategic approach to wellness, if you're cell phoned, you can certainly, it impacts your costs in a direct way. From a regional standpoint, these are all public sector in your region, and this is their most recent budget numbers that we've pulled from. Most of these clients, and these are, I think, almost all of these are our clients, if not all, build a two to five percent margin into their budget. So, when we're projecting claims, we typically build in a little bit of a margin because we know you need to come within budget. So, we like to build in some margin in those. These all typically have two to five percent margin built in, and you can see the average of those, eight, I believe, or is it nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, was right about four point six percent. So, you can see, these are all self-funded, running a little better than your program. Not to say that's going to be every year in a cell phone. You can see years where, under a cell phone program, you might run a little higher than others, but overall, over time, they certainly run lower than fully insured groups. Any questions so far? I know I'm moving at a fast pace.
Is, we have local choice now.
Yes.
And that would fall under self-funded?
It's a quasi-self-funded. During the year, it operates like a fully insured program because you pay a level premium, and there's no settlement. If you have a bad year, they're going to build that year into your next year's premiums. You do have potential for what's called terminal liability. If you leave local choice, they analyze your claims for the twelve months, up to your, in your case, that would be October twenty-four through September twenty-five, if you are to leave them this year. They would look at your cost, look at your premiums, and determine, was there a surplus that you had a good year? If there was a deficit, they will require you to settle that deficit within ninety days. We did ask local choice for what's called an adverse experience adjustment, because that's what they call it. They have not provided that in years. They used to provide it every year, but they gave it to us through June, which is when they typically do it. You were at an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus at that time. And given the fact that you've taken another nine percent increase October first, I would think you'd be in a good position if you were to leave local choice at the end of September, because you've got almost another ten percent. You have about a twenty-four million dollar budget. So, there's probably another two million dollars there. So, I would hope that you'd be in a good position. Time will tell, but we will keep an eye on that as we progress. But right now, it looks good.
Thereby meaning, potentially, if exiting the local choice, we would not have to pay them additional money to exit. Does that make sense, Ms. Ortega?
That's what the eight hundred thousand surplus means?
Yeah, they keep that. I mean, that's why I say it's quasi-cell phone. So, they keep any surpluses. In a given year, you don't pay them any additional if you're running over the premiums. But if you're running over premiums, they are going to build it into your next year's premiums.
So, they have eight hundred thousand dollars of our, eight hundred thousand of our dollars now that we did not end up using last year, is that?
They do not, you do not participate in years of good client's experience. They don't settle in a year where you have bad client's experience, but they would build a bad year into your next year's premium. So, one of the reasons you're looking at other options is potentially where you would share in years of favorable claims experience and be able to use that in a claim reserve to put aside so that you could offset future years if you did have a year that came in above budget.
And that would involve, if we went in a different route, involve working with the city and county to set up a separate fund for health insurance? And if there was funds left over at the end of the year, then those could build over time and help us cope with future increases. We don't have that option right now.
Almost like a health savings account in a way for the whole.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah. So, you make a good point. They keep, they keep any surpluses, but if, but if you have a bad year, they're going to get that money back in the next year. So, you're not participating. And I, there's some interest, I think, for you all to be able to participate in your program, especially when you have years of good experience. And I'll go a little bit more into the local choice. I can't remember how many slides, but right here in a few. Any other questions before I go into the RFP and give you a little update? Okay. So, we do provide consulting services to Williamsburg, James City County schools for your medical dental vision disability, then your EAP program. Your finance and HR and Dr. Keever and team wanted to look at alternatives to local choice this year, and alternatives being a self-funded alternative, to see if improvements could be made in the areas of administration, care management, being, offering programs that can help mitigate costs in the care management. When I say reporting, I mean, I don't mean better reporting. I mean, just basically reporting. We get hardly anything out of local choice from reporting standpoint. We did get some drug claims this year from local choice that I was able to obtain, and they've never released any drug claims in their history, but we got minimal data on that. Certainly, enhance enrollment, where you have more control of your enrollment, you're not dictated to. And then, obviously, looking at overall costs. An RFP was issued the end of August. We did ask any carrier to mirror your current plans. And then, we did receive proposals around mid-October. We've reviewed those proposals for you all, but in, in looking at the proposal overview, obviously, it was very important for your team that I work with to fulfill your fiduciary responsibility to your employees and your taxpayers, to make sure that you're offering a competitive program, that you can maintain that competitive program as much as possible, maybe mitigate costs, maybe reduce costs if we can, and then develop strategies to engage employees in a more meaningful way going forward. The evaluation, the areas that we focused on were plan designs, any deviations to those. Carriers can, when I say pretty much, almost exactly match anything you have today. So, that's really not a big deal to look at. Certainly, network access, being doctors, hospitals, specialists. If we're looking at any networks, is there any disruption in making a change where you might not have certain providers? And we've done a thorough analysis of that, and we'll be ready to present that here as we move forward. Certainly looking at financials and premiums, administrative service capabilities, the vendor's experience, especially with public sector, any impact of any networks that they might be proposing on your current claims, focusing on wellness and disease management, again, some care management programs, and then reporting and guarantees. The selection committee was made up of Dr. Keever, Renee Ewing, Tim Baker, Emily Carroll, Allyn Param, Amy Moser, Latonya, is it Bodier? Oh, thank you, and Janice Smith. And been a very good team to work with, obviously, your team here, but obviously, the committee members. I've really enjoyed working with them. As I said, we evaluated all the proposals, and we developed a report for the selection committee members, and we met with them on November the eighteenth to review those. The members went through their scoring process and selected their finalists. Those meetings were held on December the second. After those meetings, those finalists were asked to provide a best and final offer, and we met with the committee again on January the sixth to review some updates to the proposals and the financials. And then, we're continuing to evaluate some of the office and the reinsurance proposal. We're going to be preparing an additional report to the selection committee members, hopefully, here, if, if we're able to get some firm proposals on your reinsurance premiums, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Going a little bit into local choice, you offer three plans. You have what's called a Key Advantage two fifty. That's basically your deductible of two fifty, along with Centara that mirrors that, a Key Advantage five hundred, along with Centara, and then the local choice high deductible plan. All those have preventative and comprehensive. Now, the employees can choose whether they want the comprehensive or the preventive dental in their plan. We did talk a little about the funding arrangement being technically self-funded, but works like a fully insured plan, at least during the year. There is potential for that terminal liability. You do have reinsurance in your plan, which is very typical, which means any individual during your contract year, once they hit two hundred thousand dollars in claim- which means any individual during your, uh, contract year, once they hit two hundred thousand dollars in claims, any amount above that is written off, um, by local choice, and actually in this case by Anthem, since the reinsurance paper is Anthem. And Anthem does administer your local choice piece for the Key Advantage two fifty, five hundred, the high deductible. Even though it's local choice, Anthem is administering those claims, and Anthem does provide the reinsurance. And we did ask all the carriers to match that reinsurance limit of two hundred thousand, um, in going forward. I would note that your prescription drug, dental, and mental health, uh, although mental health's a much smaller part, the prescription drug's a big piece. Those are all what's called capitated. That's just a set fixed fee that is built into your local choice premiums each year. Uh, so in the example of any large claims, any large prescription drug claims wouldn't go towards your specific reinsurance right now because the costs are capitated anyway. TLC, we did get the, as I mentioned, the adverse experience adjustment, uh, of showing us an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus. Uh, and then again, based on the increases you've had, um, it's my opinion, right now you're in a good position if you did decide to terminate local choice that you wouldn't be faced with a terminal liability. That's looking at, you know, claims through June through November. Your claims are up a little bit, even though your enrollment's down, your claims aren't down by a corresponding amount, but you're still looking, uh, fairly good. When you all to make a decision, there's still gonna be months, if you decide to terminate local choice, we don't know yet, cause we don't have the final analysis. Um, you might maintain local choice, you might decide to move away from local choice, just know that, and we'll, we'll discuss this again when we do present recommendations to the board from your committee. You'll have several months after that decision where you'll continue to have claims, and we don't know what those claims will look like uh, for those several months. Claims could get better, they could get worse, we just don't know. You do have a fairly large population. So we don't see huge fluctuations in claims, uh, month to month, because you have a lot of folks on your plan, and you do have that reinsurance that comes into play for any large claims above two hundred thousand. Any questions? Okay, a little more overview of local choice, it is state-regulated. You currently have, actually a little less than the fourteen twenty-five, I should have actually changed that number. Your enrollment has changed somewhat. I think we're down about, uh, a hundred and fifty from that, from where we were, uh, prior, and I think you all are aware, probably enrollment is down a little bit. It's considered self-funded, it's quasi-self-funded. It does work like a fully insured, but you don't pay steamy state premium taxes, which you would on a fully insured plan. And that's probably one of the reasons the state, uh, considered it quasi-self-funded, they didn't wanna be taxing themselves. The medical component of your plans, all your medical claims are experience rated for any given year. So when local choice is developing your premiums for the next year, they're looking at your actual medical claims, and then they're trending forward and projecting forward. Centerra is fully insured and manually rated, so those folks that are on Centerra, uh, that's, you're, you're combined with the pool of all the groups that are with Centerra under local choice, and it's book rated. The mental health, dental, and RX are pooled under local choice, and they just charge you a set fee each year, uh, based on what they think they should be charging you for those programs in a given year. Uh, it is a set predetermined benefit plans, and there is no exceptions. You can't have any flexibility in your plans as I have local choice. As I said, um, you do have reinsurance on those plans. Some of the advantages, uh, you do have fixed premiums guaranteed for one year with no year-end settlement. But again, if you have a poor claim year, they're gonna build that into the following year's premiums. And, um, I would call that, it's a, it's a payment now or payment later. You can't get around it. Uh, they're not gonna just write off a bad claim year and walk away, they're gonna build it into the next year. Mental health, drug, and dental are capitated. Uh, it is administered by Anthem and Sarah, Centerra and Delta Dental, all three very good administrators. You have really good provider networks, uh, especially on the medical side. Dental, you still have a very good network there. Uh, your dental rates are very competitive right now. And then you don't have any what we call lasers on the reinsurance for large claims, so the reinsurance market, and we'll have more discussion on this at a future meeting. Some reinsurers, and we don't know what Anthem will do for you all. If they're coming in and quoting a new group, uh, you can have a, for example, you're under a two hundred thousand dollar specific reinsurance limit today with local choice, and we've asked all the carriers to mirror that, and they have. They might come in and say, well, for that individual, it's gonna be three hundred or six hundred for that individual. We call that lasering. All it is, is you're taking on more risk, obviously, when they laser that. Uh, we will be looking at that and reviewing that and outlining that for, um, your senior team, your selection committee, and then to the board as we get, uh, further down and get some firm rates, uh, from either Anthem and/or Centerra. Some disadvantages, uh, of local choice, uh, there's a real lack of reporting. Uh, we virtually get nothing. Uh, local choice, you have to follow their guidelines without exception. So for example, they tell you when you have to do your open enrollment, you can't decide that. They are limited care programs, so although Anthem does offer other care management programs, local choice does not include those, uh, for you to be able to tap into. There is no spouse tier. You won't develop your own internal spouse tier, but it would be nice if you could have an underwriter develop that tier for you and have a, a true four-tier program. There is potential terminal liability that we've discussed. There's no ability to track wellness incentives with local choice, and we think that's important. If you're gonna engage employees in a more meaningful way, we like to have some incentives, uh, tailored in with those wellness programs, so we get better engagement. You don't participate in years of favorable claims experience. Uh, you don't get any prescription drug rebates back to you, and rebates, uh, are really high right now in the marketplace. We're seeing, uh, very high rebates coming back from the carriers and the PBMs. They used to be good, they're really significantly higher than they have been in years. I don't like them, I wish we had more transparency, but it is where we are now in the entire market of, uh, healthcare. There's a lack of negotiating with TLC or the local choice. Uh, I think I'm the only consultant that's ever negotiated renewal down with them, and they were not happy with me when I forced them to do it. There is no flexibility in plan design choices. And just going back to, they weren't happy with me. I'm not there to be there, any of the carriers' friends. We need them, we want them to respect us, but we don't need to have them necessarily like us. They always say they like working with us until we start taking money out of their pockets, but, um, we want their respect. Enrollment capabilities, uh, if you talk to Emily, cause Emily, um, is really, um, involved with the enrollment part, and your team can attest to it, the Cardinal platform, uh, is really poor. So there's a real struggle with the enrollment platform that local choice has, and our other clients are experiencing the same thing, it just does not work well. Next steps, uh, we need to receive final stop-loss proposals. I'm anticipating those the first week in March. We are still waiting on, uh, Anthem to give us an answer if they are going to give us a firm reinsurance proposal for claims through February. Uh, and just to give you a little insight on the reinsurance markets, carriers typically will lock in four months ahead of time. And right now, we only have claims through November. Even through February, uh, we're asking them to lock in eight months, uh, out ahead of your renewal. The typical market is four months, but we are, we have pushed pretty hard asking them to provide us a firm rate because we want to get final numbers so that you all can make a decision in March, uh, at your meeting, uh, of what your decision's gonna be for October first. And the selection committee, your senior management team will provide some recommendations. We hope that's, I mean, we can march the tenth. I'll be giving, uh, your team over here an update after tomorrow, just to see where we are with, uh, those firm quotes. Uh, and then after that, with the school board, you'll make your decision and award your contracts. I think that's it.
Right?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I might have missed this. Approximately how many carriers are there, and then how many would you say offer incentives? So I came from a division where they gave incentives and premiums went down.
Yeah.
For you taking care of your health. How many carriers do we have that, offer that?
A lot of carriers can track that. Uh, a lot of our clients do offer it, and a lot of public sector clients that we have and in this region have wellness programs with incentives that they build in, and one of them you mentioned was a pre-reduction. So for example, um, you could require folks to say, we want you to get your annual physical, which is covered at a hundred percent, and we want you to complete a health risk appraisal. You don't get any of that information, it's just really for them and, and potentially for them to be getting engaged with coaches. If you fulfill those two requirements, and that's a pretty low bar, and that's a pretty initial starting point for clients. If you do that, then, um, you're gonna have a lower premium than folks that decide they don't wanna get engaged with that. They're gonna pay a higher premium. Typically, threshold's about a six hundred dollar difference a year. Helps folks start to pay attention and decide that, yeah, it's not, it's easy to get a physical. We want them to get their physical, we want their primary care doctors to know their health. And for them to get a health risk appraisal, so they can understand their health and potentially look at areas to get a coach involved to help them through any specific chronic illness they have, uh, or illness. Uh, but most employers are offering, uh, an incentive, and what we would do is, is work with your team to design that. And then, uh, ask whatever carrier that you select. Local choice can't track incentives now. I think it's important, if we're gonna put incentive in, you wanna be able to track and see who's, who's complying.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the presentation, uh, Mike, and thank you for taking time to walk us through it. Uh, could you kinda tell us like what, uh, used to the next steps are looking at this, but like, what would be the solutions of the next steps? Like, we're saying, we've heard a couple of things, that there are concerns and problems with the current model we have. Um, I can speak to like the Cardinal and not being a great thing, it's not helpful, I'm a state employee as well, but, um, I just don't know, like, what, what can people expect, I guess, kinda what I'm asking.
Uh, for the next month here or so?
Yeah, like, if, as we're walking through this.
We, um, we've, we've completed most of the analysis. We're really waiting, and we have illustrative reinsurance quotes. But illustrative aren't worth anything till you get a firm reinsurance quote. We wanna know what their final pricing's gonna be, and are they gonna laser any individuals or not? We're hoping that, um, Centerra has not been agreeable, uh, to do that until claims through, through May, which isn't good. Late, but then again, they're, they're hampered by the fact local choice doesn't provide data uh, and very little data, so it's more difficult for them to, um, be more cooperative. Anthem is the administrator of local choice. They have all the data. Uh, so they're in a better position. And they currently take the risk on the current local choice program, so I've had a very specific discussion with them of, you're already taking the risk. You're not coming in at the eleventh hour and underwriting a new group, you've had this group, you've had the risk on your, your paper, being the reinsurer for some time. And, uh, we don't get many favors. We will negotiate with carriers all the time. But we don't get many what we call chips, and I had a very blunt discussion with them, just told them straight up, we're asking, we're, we're cashing in a chip and asked for them to do a favor to give us a firm rate eight months out instead of four months out. Um, I had a very good blunt discussion with them, and I'm, I'm hopeful that they're gonna cooperate with us. And I'm gonna hear something tomorrow. If I don't hear what I want, we're gonna keep pushing on it.
Ultimately, we, we wanna, uh, put the school board in a position to make a decision as you are approving the final budget with a number that is indicative of what we think we'll spend on health insurance. So, I, I think over the next couple of weeks, we're gonna work really hard to, uh, inform the decision around that dollar amount.
We have a pretty good idea of how it's gonna look, we just want, we'd like to have that firm number.
Do you have a sense of how many claims that are at the two hundred thousand dollar mark or above that, that?
We do, we have, we, uh, we received that data in the RFP process, and we, we do have the data. I don't have it in front of me, but we can get that to you.
We can provide that in an SBQ for you.
Yeah, I mean, and I'd be curious, the context also, is that, is that higher than averages? Do we have a, like, a, a lot of them?
We, we can provide some of that data back to you. I, I, I do know, I don't have the data. But I do know we, we have one very large prescription drug claim that's out there, but we're not sure it's ongoing or not. Uh, we'll be able to find that out when we get final pricing, but we can get data at least on what, where you are now, how many large claims you had. We'll provide that to you. It'll be medical only, since prescription drug is capitated, we don't get any data, but it'll just be medical.
And then I have one, did you have another?
Oh, no, sir.
Anyone else? Just relating specifically to the plan, the, the plans that we have under local choice now. So, the, overall, it's going up about nine, ten percent?
In your current year, yes.
And?
I mean, we'll, we'll have final numbers when we get our renewal. We're waiting, I didn't mention that, I should. We're waiting on the local choice renewal. They said they'd have it to us the end of December, and then they said, well, we're out to bid, we can't get it to you till the end of January. So I'm hoping we have that the end of next week, so at least with local choice, you'll know what your worst-case scenario was.
And that would be driven primarily by the key advantage plans, because Centerra actually went down? Is that what?
I haven't seen anything from Centerra.
We've not seen anything from the local choice and/or if, if we remain with them, what it would be for Centerra or what it would be for the local choice plans. So we, we hope by the end of this month, early next, they will have finished at the state level the RFP and made a decision on providers whereby they could let us know what our renewal rate would be. Part of the reason that we've started the budget process with the fifteen percent increase is that we feel like that's a strong worst-case scenario to put in front of the board for thoughtful discussion.
All right, uh, Mrs. Sun, just for a second.
So if I'm reading this correctly, currently it says we have twelve hundred enrolled in Anthem and only two hundred and twenty-five in Centerra. And we were trying to encourage people to go through Centerra, so I would assume two hundred and twenty-five people didn't make much of a difference to bring down costs.
We, we don't know yet.
Oh, no?
I think we're still waiting on that information for next year.
And your numbers are a little lower than that, I mean, Renee, we're?
Yeah, plus it's, it's less to the employee, it doesn't save the division any money, because we pay the same as a division for every employee who takes the insurance. So it doesn't save the division money, but it can save the employee.
Good point.
So they take home more of whatever potential raise they get by, by being on the?
By selecting that plan, and you'll remember last year when we were going through the budget process, we talked about, um, employee education around the various plan designs.
Right.
And our goal was, and I think we did fairly well with that, is to enhance the number of employees that looked at that option as the option that would work best for them and their family, whereby potentially saving that employee money doesn't have a net positive impact on the school division, because the amount that we put in is the same. It did save the employees.
I think the greatest advantage of, of looking at other options is more ability to control our own plans and maybe have some savings that can be banked at the end of the year and be used towards a, a, a worse year. Potentially.
Control your own destiny.
Yes, sir.
And will that be presented to us with, with coverage from, from, from the employee's point of view?
Yes, you, uh, plan design-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have, uh, we'll have the plan design and the financials ready, hopefully in that March meeting if we get, we'll have the local choice for sure. And we're hoping to have, uh, the other alternatives, uh, final firm rates for that March, uh, meeting.
It's just very close to the end of the budget process.
It's really, it's very challenging budget-wise. I think we'll keep the board informed as we get more information to the extent that we can, because the RFP process is still moving forward and is confidential. But this gives you a sense of where we are in the process right now. But this gives you a sense of where we are in the process right now. Um, but I think hearing from local choice will certainly help us.
And if we didn't have this eight hundred thousand dollar surplus, which I'm still not totally sure where that came from, but if we didn't have that hypothetically on the books, how much would it cost us to leave local choice?
Um, and I would say it, it's um, just to be really clear on the surplus, it's, it's not a, we have, it's local choice has it, just to be sure.
Sure, but we have sort of a credit and.
If you, um, they're gonna look at your claims October twenty-fourth through September twenty-five and determine whether they're more cost than you paid in premium. We don't know what that looks like because we only have claims through November right now. So there's a long period to go. I would just say that based on the fact that they did an analysis for us through June and you were in a surplus position of eight hundred thousand and you've taken on another nine percent increase October, which is another two million dollars in premium to them. I would assume you're in a pretty good position uh, and not have any terminal liability uh, in September. I would not think that you're gonna see a degradation in your claims experience that would wipe out that uh, surplus that would potentially be sitting there.
So ultimately, if we want to make a change, and that's what the selection committee brings back to the board for their consideration, this is a good year to do it because there is a surplus right now that we hope will hold. And therefore we would potentially may not have anything to pay for exiting local choice if we choose to do so. In a different year, we might have to actually pay them significant money to leave local choice.
And that's my question. What is that significant amount?
We don't know. We don't know.
It varies plan year to plan year. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, it, yes, every year is, is a different year. Uh, but right now you look like you're in a good position, especially since you've taken on another nine percent increase in October.
I feel like a couple of years ago when we went through a similar RFP scenario, um, the number to exit local choice was somewhere over a million dollars.
All right, a quick question.
Okay, Mr. Riffle?
Um, I think the viewing public, when we talk about surpluses, we should maybe be careful. I think you mentioned that it's not our money, right? We've paid the, to this company already. Um, and so can we talk about like what that means? Like maybe this is, I just wanna kinda walk it back a little bit here.
Yeah, probably the best term is reserve.
Sure, yeah.
I, I, I hear you. I, I think that is a better, um, and we'll, we'll continue to use that phrase going forward. It, it is a reserve. Uh, it's not like a surplus, you can just spend it or, or give it away. It's, it's, it should be reserved for future years and for strategic initiatives.
It still has value.
Right.
I mean, a thousand, eight hundred thousand.
That's value to us if, if we leave. That's where we get the most value from.
You know, I, I'm, I'm looking at this overview of the local choice and the advantages versus disadvantages. I don't know. I really like all these advantages, to be quite honest with you. I mean, you're going to a good doctor and they're gonna take care of you and you got good rates.
Mr. Ossing?
One of the issues we had last year, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we were trying to encourage employees to go to Centerra because it was basically a better cost plan for, for the school system. Yeah, but the employees were upset or concerned about leaving their old plan, starting a new plan and, and keeping their similar or same doctors. If we're gonna be going with a new plan here, are we gonna come in with the same issue with the employees where they're gonna have to potentially move to new doctors, new um, offices, et cetera?
We'll have that full analysis for the committee in their final recommendation and to the school board. You'll be able to see that specifically in very detail.
But, but is it more than likely that that's gonna take place or are some of these doctors?
If there's any disruption, it'll be this much.
Okay. Okay.
The networks here are very good with local choice being Anthem's network, um, or Centerra. Um, and even other carriers have good networks, but I mean, those are both solid networks.
If there are no additional questions, um, Madam Chair, we may want to move on to the other piece of the budget.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you all very much. Look forward to seeing you hopefully in March.
Yes. It'd be a great birthday gift.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
As we um, move forward in the process, uh, we will keep you informed of, of where we are and information as we receive it. And um, you know, we're very hopeful we'll have it in, in good time for the budget, but obviously we're going through a a process to get to a better end result. And Ms. Ewing has set up now to take us through our second budget work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This afternoon, we will continue discussing preliminary information related to the fiscal year twenty-six operating budget. I will review the state revenue and expenditure information that was shared at the last budget work session. The review of expenditures will include the alignment with our strategic plan priorities. We will provide an overview of additional budget requests beyond those already discussed and review next steps. As a reminder, this is a preliminary look at the governor's proposed budget amendments and may change depending on actions of the general assembly. At our last budget work session, we only reviewed mandatory expenditures and expenditures to maintain our current levels of service related to staffing requirements as well as non-negotiable expenditure increases from contractual commitments that we have. There are additional cost increases and savings that we will present this afternoon. Here you will see our state revenue comparison as we shared previously that shows based on the governor's budget proposal, state revenue is estimated to go up by approximately two point four million. While building the budget, we use the strategic plan to guide the development of the budget to ensure that the goals align with the plan and that the budget supports the needs and goals of the school division. We will now review expenditure increases for each strategic plan priority. Expenditures related to the key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity and shared at the previous budget workshop include mandatory FTEs for leap teachers and special education staff as well as essential FTEs for classroom teachers, counselors, based on our staffing ratios and ESAR-funded positions for quarter one of the current fiscal year. Other expenditure increases shared previously related to the key priority include FTEs transitioning from our Title II and VI B grants, anticipated increases to our cost for New Horizons and Special Education Private Day Tuition as well as the Canvas Learning Management System and Lexia Tier Two Support. Mr. Walker will now share additional requests related to the key priority.
Good evening. In alignment with the key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity, we are requesting one additional assistant principal for the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program. The Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program has a principal and one assistant principal supervising a staff of about eighty-five employees at five elementary schools with thirty-two classrooms and approximately four hundred students. Running parallel to the physical construction of a new school, or in this case, two new pre-k centers, the school division has historically hired a planning principal prior to the opening of a new school facility. Therefore, in a similar approach, we are requesting a second assistant principal allocation for the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program for the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This second assistant principal would allow the current principal, Mrs. Nelson, to have a more direct hand in the detailed planning needed to bring those five sites and about eighty-five employees together as one team supporting now close to five hundred students at the two new pre-k centers. Once the two new centers are completed and opened for school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we feel it's imperative to have an assistant principal at each site daily and allowing the principal to be able to move between the two sites, performing essential duties and leading the entire program. Furthermore, our Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program is quite unique as it serves our most at-risk students with over sixty percent of those students receiving special education services. To put that into perspective, our nine elementary schools may have a range of about fourteen percent to twenty-one percent of their total students receiving special education services. In alignment again with key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity, we are requesting two additional gifted and talent development teachers to work directly with students in grades kindergarten to second at two elementary schools. The school division's refreshed strategic plan Elevate to Twenty-Eight emphasizes the importance of pursuing excellence and championing the success of every student. Additionally, Goal One of the school division's local gifted plan supports the idea of elevating the thinking of all students to uncover student potential for rigorous coursework and programs such as the gifted program. The first, the elementary gifted program has three main components. The first main component would be talent development push-in lessons for every kindergarten, first grade, and second grade classroom using Harvard's Project Zero Thinking routines. This is followed by classroom visits into all K through two classrooms to co-teach and monitor students' need for challenge and differentiation. The second core component would be teacher collaboration through team and department planning. And the third component provides differentiated instructional strategies and materials to ensure that all students are challenged in their regular classroom setting. Over the last three years, we have implemented a pilot program at James River Elementary by providing two full-time gifted resource teachers at that school. One gifted teacher focused solely on grades kindergarten through second and the other gifted resource teacher focused solely on the upper elementary grades. This year, we replicated that model at Norwich Elementary School and we want to continue growing the program by adding two additional gifted and talent development teachers at two more elementary schools. Currently, the remaining seven elementary schools also receive the Talent Development Push-In Program for those students in grades kindergarten to second, but those seven schools share two itinerant traveling gifted teachers to serve them. This means that the itinerant gifted resource teacher is only at that assigned school once a week. Thus, the program components are spread out over the course of a month, meaning the students receive one gifted push-in lesson per month compared to the eight push-in lessons received by the students at James River and Norwich Elementary Schools. This chart shows James River Elementary School gifted identification information for the last three years. Two full-time gifted and talent development teachers have been in place since twenty-one, twenty-two at James River. Reading from left to right, you can see that ten students were identified gifted in the spring of twenty-twenty-two, followed by thirty-two students identified gifted in the spring of twenty-three, and then twenty-three identified gifted students in the spring of twenty-four. Looking specifically at gifted identification for three student groups, Hispanic, Black, and two or more, if those are combined together, we see one student out of the ten that were identified gifted in twenty-twenty-two. Nineteen out of the total thirty-two or fifty-nine percent were identified gifted in twenty-twenty-three. And eleven out of the total twenty-three or forty-eight percent were identified gifted in twenty-twenty-four. We celebrate this continued growth at James River Elementary and we look forward to seeing the year one data that will come out in late spring for Norwich Elementary. And now I'll turn it back over to Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Also related to the key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity is a request for additional funding to support our summer school program. For four years, we have utilized ESAR funding to expand the program offering during the summer and increase the pay in order to staff the program. These additional funds of three hundred twenty thousand will allow us to continue the same robust program that has been in place since twenty-twenty-one. This year, we were fortunate to offer part one of cognitive coaching training to forty leaders and specialists who utilize coaching skills to support the team members they serve. This year's training was funded by a one-time VDOE grant. We are requesting operational funds of twenty thousand to complete part two of this training in twenty-five, twenty-six, which will allow us to leverage a train-the-trainer approach and expand coaching supports to all employees moving forward. Additionally, we are requesting twenty thousand to continue to offer curriculum-based professional learning in the summer. Camp GPS was a huge success in the summer of twenty-twenty-four, allowing us to proactively train teachers on the new standards of learning, access curriculum materials, and collaboratively plan with other educators from across the division prior to the start of the school year. Survey results indicated that teachers not only appreciated this opportunity but found great value in having the information and resources early in the summer. This slide shows our summer program enrollment for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four with just over one thousand students participating in the programs over the past two years. Additionally, this slide shows data related specifically to the high school summer program for credits recovered, acceleration credits received, as well as the number of summer school graduates for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Dr. Brown will now review additional position requests.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. In line with Elevate Twenty-Eight's focus on academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity, we are requesting new positions to help enhance current behavioral practices across K-12. To start, we're focusing on the elementary level by requesting nine teacher assistant positions, one for each elementary school. These positions will focus on supporting the emotional and self-regulation needs of our elementary students, especially in grades kindergarten and first. This extra support will help set our students up for success both in and out of the classroom. To help explain why these positions are important, I want to give you a quick overview of the work already being done by WJCC school staff, school leadership, and student services. As part of our strategic plan, one of our goals is to reduce the use of exclusionary disciplinary practices such as out-of-school suspensions across the division. Over the summer, the departments of school leadership and student services met with each school to review discipline data from the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, set behavioral goals for the year, and identify what supports are needed to achieve those goals. This work is ongoing. Throughout the school year, student services meets with individual schools at the end of each academic quarter to review behavioral data, check progress on discipline goals, and decide on next steps to meet the needs of schools and specific students. The trends highlighted on this slide come from feedback that we gathered during our summer discipline review meetings, school-based discussion with administration, and employee input sessions. At the elementary level, there's a clear need for targeted support to help students with emotional regulation and stamina throughout the school day. In kindergarten and first grade, we're seeing a significant number of behavior referrals for students who actions disrupt their own learning and the learning of others. These situations often require immediate intervention from staff. Without a prompt response to meet their needs, these behaviors can escalate. Elementary school administrators have shared that having a dedicated position that helps implement established behavioral plans, structured and timely reinforcement for specific students, and being available to provide additional support throughout the day will greatly enhance the ability to minimize classroom disruptions. Behavioral data also supports this need. Kindergarten and first grade account for forty-five percent of behavioral referrals at the elementary level as of December. It's important to point out that a referral doesn't necessarily lead to disciplinary actions such as out-of-school suspension, but it does indicate where additional support is needed. Creating an elementary behavioral support position will allow us to better meet the needs of our students while minimizing the instructional time lost due to behavioral challenges. This role would require staff to be certified in non-violent crisis intervention and actively participate in school-based MTSS teams to provide input and better understand the needs of students currently receiving interventions. These positions would work closely with school leadership, our division behavior specialists, and the department of student services to deliver proactive, targeted interventions tailored to the unique needs of each student. As we plan for the upcoming school year, these positions will play a key role in supporting the behavioral goals that are set by each school. At the secondary level, we're asking that we sustain four positions into our operating budget that are being proposed in support of our new, newest non-traditional program within the restorative center called the Reset Program. Over twenty-two hundred school days were lost to out-of-school suspensions for students in grades six through twelve. Beyond impacting daily attendance and contributing to chronic absenteeism, research shows that suspensions, even short-term ones, can have long-term effects. Students who are suspended are more li- likely to face repeated suspensions, experience social isolation, develop feelings of distrust, and show lower levels of achievement on. social isolation, develop feelings of distrust, and show lower levels of achievement on standardized tests. While out-of-school suspension is necessary for certain behaviors, we also want to ensure that students who are suspended have the opportunity to reflect on their actions, repair relationships, and receive academic support during their suspension. The Reset Program would provide the support before they return to their zone schools, and we can help ensure a smoother transition back to the classroom. Looking at the data, an added benefit of the Reset Program would allow us to better serve students who are disproportionately represented in discipline data with the goal of supporting their long-term success. The final area that I'd like to talk about is requesting the addition of six positions to provide increased support for self-contained classrooms at the elementary level. Currently, each self-contained classroom within WJCC has an assigned paraprofessional to help provide programming, but we are asking for the addition of six more at the elementary level. These six positions are designed to support the goals set for students with disabilities within WJCC who receive services in self-contained classrooms. This includes addressing the needs of these students, supporting their participation in collaborative classrooms, and ensuring that they have inclusive opportunities beyond the core content areas. The six positions will be assigned to the elementary schools that currently do not have an additional paraprofessional in self-contained classrooms beyond the one position already assigned. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And at this time, Dr. Worley is going to be joining us to share information related to AP exams.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Key priority academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity prioritizes many aspects of academic growth for students. One area of focus is advanced coursework. Therefore, it is essential that we return to embedding the cost of AP exams for all students within the operating budget. Several factors supporting this decision are: One, this supports student engagement at advanced coursework and eliminates any barriers connected to accessing and paying for AP exams. Participating in AP exams has the potential to support students and families, as students may have the opportunity to earn college credit based on their student scores on AP exams. And finally, participation in credit-bearing college coursework has a direct impact on school accreditation within the three-E framework, which focuses on enrollment, employment, and enlistment. Specifically, schools earn points for student enrollment in AP courses and for participation in advanced placement exams. Now, taking a look at our data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, you see that students across the division sat for a total of one thousand four hundred and eight AP exams. However, enrollment in AP courses was at two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. This equates to about fifty-nine percent exam participation rate. We recommend prioritizing a hundred percent participation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as this supports our key priority, and it directly impacts our accountability framework, and most importantly, eliminates barriers and expands opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Related to supporting priority, safety, and security, and shared at the last meeting, expenditures here include an increase in contractual services for our visitor and emergency management system, annual inspections, as well as our radio maintenance agreement with neighboring localities. As I shared at our last meeting, we will be in our final year of eligibility for the elementary security officer grant. We do intend to apply for the grant again, and we may know by final budget adoption in May if we will receive funding for these positions. However, this grant does have a matching requirement, so even if we receive the grant again for all nine positions, a minimum of two-hundred-fifty thousand will be required in the operating fund to support the match requirement. Moving on to the supporting priority, human capital and positive culture, here you will see the cost of a three percent salary increase for all staff as provided for in the state budget. For WJCC, every one percent of salary increase costs the division approximately one-point-three million, including fringe benefits. This chart shows the amount of local support needed from the localities to be able to provide a salary increase for all staff of three percent. A three percent increase would require one-point-three million in local funding. As a reminder, this table is from the information that Bolton shared at the December meeting from the compensation study, which shows a preliminary implementation cost summary for their recommended changes. These recommended changes would cost a total of seven-point-six million. One-point-seven million for the combining of our support and admin scales into a general range scale, and five-point-nine million for the teacher scale. One possibility to start addressing the recommendations of the compensation study is to plan for a three-year implementation period and address one-third next year. This would be an estimated cost of six-hundred thousand for the general scale adjustments and one-point-nine million for the teacher pay scale adjustments. By spreading the implementation over multiple years, this does mean that future years will cost more. At the last budget work session, we shared information regarding bus driver pay, and there seems to be support for a three-dollar-per-hour increase effective this year. The cost to continue that into fiscal year twenty-six is four-hundred-twenty-three thousand, and this will be offset by a reduction in driver FTEs, which we will show on a future slide. The next item for consideration related to compensation is contractual day adjustments amounting to one-hundred-seventy-five thousand, which includes additional workdays for elementary and middle school reading and math specialists, and increasing the workdays for the lead high school counselors, and adding to the work calendar for middle school registrars. There are stipend adjustments for consideration that amount to two-hundred-seventy-five thousand. These include enhancing the stipends for mentor teachers who are working with our most novice educators, adding team leaders to the Bright Beginnings program, and adding a stipend for after-school bus duty at elementary and middle schools. Related to the compensation study, increasing the stipend amounts for middle school athletic directors and middle school cheerleading coaches. Lastly, related to compensation is new teacher pay for required summer training prior to the start of their contract. We are one of the only divisions that does not currently pay new hires for this training. The estimated cost is one-hundred-five thousand. Last year, we were able to absorb this expense through ESER funds, and this stipend amount is far more cost-effective than adding contractual days for new teachers. As a reminder, this is the estimated healthcare cost information that we shared at the last meeting. We are estimating a fifteen percent increase to our current year costs based on the information shared earlier this evening. If that increase is split the same with employees as it has been on a seventy-thirty split, it would mean an increase of two-point-eight million to our budget next year. As the RFP committee finalizes their recommendation, we will be able to share more specific information related to healthcare. Here you will see the expenditure increases previously presented as related to supporting priority, organizational efficiency, and effectiveness. These total approximately nine-hundred-ninety-two thousand. These include contractual increases for audit, risk management, purchasing, and grounds, as well as an increase for utilities. In alignment with the supporting priority of organizational efficiency and effectiveness, we are requesting one accountant and a senior payroll specialist within the finance department. This chart shows a comparison of finance and payroll staff to total FTEs with some of our like-school divisions, as well as York County. We have the highest ratio for finance staff to total FTEs at one to four-hundred-and-one, and the second highest for payroll staff to total FTEs at one to six-hundred-and-sixty-eight. After COVID in twenty-twenty, the finance department was reduced by one position. This chart shows the total transactions, total journal entries, and total number of invoices processed each year since twenty-twenty. The workload has continued to increase, with the total number of transactions up by twenty-four percent since twenty-twenty. In addition, as was shared in December during our audit presentation, there are four new GAZBIA accounting standards coming up in the next few years that will have a significant impact on financial reporting and record-keeping. This slide shows payroll transactional data for twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-four. WJCC is experiencing higher employee turnover, which means more entries to be reviewed and processed. When comparing twenty-twenty-four to twenty-nineteen, it is an increase of eighty-six percent in the number of transactions. We are also seeing a shift in the number of VRS Plan One and Two employees to hybrid members. This creates more items to track, verify, and reconcile, as hybrid members have the ability to update their voluntary retirement contribution each month and are eligible for short-term disability, which creates more leave to track. Mr. Baker will now review additional requests related to the supporting priority of organizational efficiency and effectiveness.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. We are requesting an additional human resources coordinator. As we look to retain our exemplary workforce by fostering a supportive work environment, we want to better engage and communicate with our employees. By adding another human resources coordinator, it will allow us to have more time, closer to our customers, onsite. We'd be more proactive with better communication and feedback that will lead to improved employee relations. We will have direct employee input and better understanding of employment issues. We will have more boots on the ground to support the work and serve those who are serving our students. On this slide, we show the number of employees and the human resource staff for some of our neighboring school divisions, as well as James City County. Hanover Research and the Society for Human Resources Management, or SHRM, support having more resources in this area. SHRM recommends having a minimum of one-point-five HR staff per one-hundred employees in your organization, with a recommended range between one-point-five and four-point-five, and we currently have point-five-five. As you heard earlier this evening, there is a consideration of moving away from the local choice for health insurance. Benefits Administration Services are recommended to help oversee the complex administrative tasks associated with effective plan management. The services would ensure compliance with regulations, accurate record-keeping, clear employee communications, monitoring plan performance, and providing recommendations on plan design and rates, as well as data insights to ensure plan effectiveness.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Snikes will now share information related to a request for maintenance assistance.
Good evening. Based on APPA and IFMA standards, the recommended staffing level benchmark is one maintenance full-time equivalent per forty-seven thousand square feet of maintained space. Utilizing this benchmark and total maintainable square footage, this calculates to a total of forty-two FTEs required to properly operate and maintain WJCC facilities. These industry benchmarks indicate having to maintain these facilities with a shortage of twenty-two FTEs. The additional full-time maintenance assistance would help in completing routine maintenance, service calls, work orders, and preventative maintenance activities in a timely manner.
In alignment with supporting priority, organizational efficiency, and effectiveness, we have the following savings. A reduction of one grounds worker FTE. We utilize shared services with James City County for grounds management, and as part of that agreement, as grounds workers leave WJCC, the county assumes the FTE. Our last grounds worker left earlier this year. We have a reduction of four bus driver FTEs, and at this point in our budget development, we are estimating attrition savings of five-hundred thousand, bringing our savings estimate to seven-hundred-twenty thousand. And now to summarize what we've discussed this afternoon and at the last work session, our preliminary state revenue increase as compared to our fiscal year twenty-five budget and based on the governor's proposed budget amendments is approximately two-point-four million. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of approximately two-point-four million to our expenditure adjustments, which total sixteen-point-two million, the total shortfall amounts to approximately thirteen-point-nine million, which would become a request to our funding partners. This would be a twelve-point-nine percent increase over current year appropriations. I do want to mention that the items presented during our two budget work sessions are adjustments that are being considered for the superintendent's proposed budget, which will be presented on February eighteenth. We are continuing to gather data and cost estimates for various items to finalize the superintendent's budget proposal over the next several weeks. At the last work session, I shared that the average increase over the past ten years from the localities that we've received is around two-point-nine percent. If we assume a two-point-nine percent over our fiscal year twenty-five appropriation, which is an increase of three, which is an increase of three-point-one million from the localities, then the additional funds we would need to request would be approximately ten-point-seven million. For reference, in both fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five, the increase was five-point-four percent. We also wanted to share with the board budget requests that were submitted during this year's process but not brought forward. This includes an additional twenty-one FTEs at an estimated amount of one-point-eight million, additional stipend requests at an estimated cost of six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, contractual day changes for various positions that we are not recommending at this time, amounting to one-hundred-sixty-five thousand, as well as years two and three of the Bolton Compensation Study recommendations, amounting to approximately five-point-two million. In total, that is about seven-point-seven million in requests that were identified as needs but not being recommended at this time. Upcoming dates in the budget process include the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget on February eighteenth, a public hearing on March fourth, and there will be a joint budget work session with our funding partners on March fourteenth. Then the budget will be presented for your approval on March eighteenth. And at this time, Mr. Ottstad is going to join us to present information related to lacrosse.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for having me here tonight. We received recent requests from the board to review the possibility of implementing lacrosse as an official high school sport within WJCC. The next few slides will bring the board a high-level summary of costs and other needs associated with the implementation of a lacrosse program in WJCC schools. Currently, WJCC does not have an official lacrosse team in our high schools, participating through the VHSL. We do have many students participating in club lacrosse across all three schools. Currently, WJCC has numerous athletic programs and activities across our high schools. This slide outlines current data and shows student participation numbers based on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. WJCC has twenty-four varsity athletic programs, ten junior varsity athletic programs, and five competitive activity programs in our division high schools. The initial cost of implementation, year one, ranges from a low projection of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand to a high projection of two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, one-hundred dollars. Estimates for equipment and uniforms are quoted from BSN Sports, December two thousand twenty-four. The annual recurring costs average about fifty thousand dollars for boys' lacrosse and forty-five thousand dollars for girls' lacrosse. This slide also highlights items covered in the cost projection, for example, officials, transportation, coaching stipends, equipment, reconditioning, et cetera. Transportation remains a huge challenge, both in providing buses to competitions and for the possibility of providing buses to practice spaces on turf at the whisk if needed. The division is currently exploring multiple options to provide the necessary bus runs for existing VHSL after-school activities. The implementation of lacrosse would add six additional teams to the mix of after-school practice and games, with a need for transportation to both practice fields and competitions. The division will need to build capacity for bus drivers so that transportation would be able to provide the needed runs for spring competitions. Currently, there are no Bay Rivers District teams that have VHSL lacrosse. The closest VHSL competitors are currently in Virginia Beach, Hanover, and Henrico Counties. This requires that transportation to non-WJCC away games would exceed fifty miles each way. Coordination with local school divisions within the Bay Rivers District is a critical part of the successful implementation of a lacrosse program. We would hope to match timelines with local divisions to provide local teams for competition. Finally, to support the additional effort, coordination, and work, we suggest moving forward with our transition to a twelve-month athletic director at the high schools, with an addition of a stipend for an assistant athletic director. Finally, we have some considerations for competition and practice facilities. Currently, Warner Stadium is reserved for boys' and girls' varsity and JV soccer competitions in the spring. Roughly eight home games- Roughly eight home games per school leaving little if no flexibility for additional facility usage for competitions in the spring at that facility. There are already existing dates with the existing soccer schedule where Cooley Field needs to be used for overflow soccer competitions. Lacrosse, like football, is especially hard on fields requiring more maintenance from the county. Continuing to practice at the Whisk Fields like the current lacrosse clubs are doing. May incur additional costs to WJCC for facility reservations. The addition of artificial turf fields at Cooley Field and high school sites would allow for JV soccer, varsity soccer and lacrosse. To practice without additional wear and tear on fields and additional ask from the WJCC Transportation Department. Turfing Cooley Field would create a competition space for all six WJCC lacrosse teams. We recommend building a turf field at every high school for practice into the CIP. These turfing investments will continue to support a wider range of student activities throughout WJCC. Including but not limited to lacrosse, soccer, football and field hockey. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ottstad, and that concludes our budget presentation for this afternoon. I know it was a lot of information. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. All right. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first just before I forget. Can you explain to me again what a contractual change is? What what did that entail again? On, oh, there's no page. Not, it's not going to be.
It's like increasing days for certain positions, the reading and math specialists.
So for example, guidance counselors at the high school and other school divisions, they're all twelve month employees and ours are not. And therefore we lose lead counselors to other divisions. And so for several years, that's been in the back burner as an ask that hasn't come forward. So that would be an addition of days to that particular role. So there's several of those that that. To make us similar to other divisions that we're asking for, we're putting a figure in that would cover all of those asks. And we also provided the many things that we didn't bring forward tonight for the board's information as well.
Right, okay, so wait, okay. So the additional stipend request as well, because I thought I heard. That you were thinking about for cheerleading and some other, but then this is negating it now, right? Or no? That's where I'm confused.
That figure in the budget will allow several requests for stipends to be met that we've looked at and carefully and decided. These are the ones we want to move forward. And that also includes the recommendations of the report as well, the compensation study report.
Mr. Riffle?
I'm gonna ask some questions about lacrosse if it's okay. I have a question about how big of a team is it for boys and girls? Is there like a size? If it's not in that little chart, initial recruiting and recurring cost. I'm trying to think of a other sports team that's similar in size and what their costs are.
We modeled cost estimates off of teams of twenty five athletes for both boys and girls. That would be likely the cap that we would keep our rosters at. It's very possible at some of our schools, we would not be able to fill at the current time up to twenty five. Some of the rosters may be a little less, but that's what we're modeling off of.
Sure. So that would be twenty five person teams for each high school.
Correct.
As in our high schools can play each other?
Sure.
Okay, then that's one of my questions. And then that's one. I want to count my three. The second one I have is like, how are the conversations with our neighbors going? Have we had any preliminary discussions? Like if we're looking into this, like what is Hampton and Newport News and New Kent?
So I can't speak to all of our neighboring school divisions, but I do know that there are conversations happening in the Bay Rivers. And there is a very high level of collaboration between the Bay Rivers teams in order to make. Implementation as smooth of a process as possible so that it can benefit all of our communities.
Maybe it would be helpful just to mention the school divisions that have schools participating in Bay Rivers, just for example.
So it's Williamsburg, James City County, York County, Isle of Wight, New Kent and Picocin.
I only ask because those are the only schools we can, we could play when we play in this sport. Or could you play like Hampton because they have a similar sized team? Or you, you know what I mean? That's what I'm asking.
So we, I think we're open to playing schools even if they're not in class four. Larger and smaller schools. I think the big thing right now is distance to competitors. Obviously, Virginia Beach and Greater Richmond is a long drive. It's not, we do make that drive from time to time. But right now, we don't have any other options closer than that.
And this, and I would be like, what is implementation? Like what is like, kind of like pie in the sky? If we could do this like. A year from now, two years, like what could we see that? Because I'm assuming the cost will change a little bit, but it's just more like, let's think about this with some more.
Um, I think that currently the pathway to implementation is looking like a spring of two thousand twenty seven is probably best case scenario. Assuming that our project at Cooley Field continues to go as scheduled. And assuming that other Bay River schools continue to move on that same timeline.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for lacrosse? Let's stick with lacrosse for a minute, just so we're not jumping all over. Mrs. Henley?
Okay, so I've seen lacrosse, but I've never, how many play at one time on the field out of twenty four? How many?
That is a good question. I think it's, I think it's a lot.
Okay, so if if.
It's very similar to soccer.
Okay, so what would happen if we opened it up and. Not that many kids come out or to make the team, then what would happen?
I think if we decide to open lacrosse as a VHSL sport, we run it with confidence that we will build capacity in our school division.
Okay.
It is very possible that we may have a school with a program that is just unable to fill a team. That happens with any sport. Currently, we have JV teams that don't fill throughout the years and we just don't have a JV team.
Do we have data on how many, okay, so there are clubs, club teams. Do we know like how many kids are on that club team that are at War Hill? How many are the club team at Lafayette and how many? And same with the girls. Can you get that to us? Okay.
I can, I can send it to you tomorrow. I don't have it right here, but I do have it.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Donner?
I'm curious for the costs. How does that compare to the costs of other teams that we pay for?
Very similar. I would say it's very similar to football, very similar to any sport that we hold in a gated facility. So anything that's played at Warner Stadium, we're paying for security, we're paying for ticket takers.
Just a little bit on the higher end of our sports?
Um, I'd say it's on par. Yeah, it's more expensive than a sport, say like swimming or track and field. But any, any sport that's a field sport, I would say it's very similar to the additional cost that we would be looking at. That make it closer to football would be reconditioning costs for the boys' equipment. So boys are wearing helmets and shoulder pads which need to be. Reconditioned for safety purposes, just like football helmets and pads.
I have one last question. Oh, sorry.
I think Dr. Kavazos.
Oh, sorry. Also. Talents, scouts that come out to sea. So I'm under the assumption that when they're playing on the club sports. No scouts ever come and could offer them scholarships to colleges. It can only happen if they're playing on a high school team.
That's not.
Okay, I just need a clarity. Okay, thank you.
But wouldn't you agree they're more likely to be observed if they're playing in VHSL's teams?
I can't comment on that. I don't know, sir.
Well, it seemed to me, I mean, there's already a tremendous amount of interest. So I'm really, the question I want to ask is what are the impediments? Other than the field to play on?
One of the main ones is transportation, Dr. Kavazos, and having teams locally to play as part of the Bay Rivers.
But the Bay River guys, they're really moving forward. I mean, York County is, they're pushing pretty fast.
Yeah, I think we're actually in close connection with York County's to look at their timeline.
So could we, in summary. Could we understand for this budget cycle or for our purposes, you know, over the next three months? Is there anything that we can do to facilitate those conversations? Or move, move towards the twenty twenty seven goal? What comes first, you know, what's the chicken and what's the egg? Do we have to put some money towards something to show that we're, to show our interest in order for other divisions to come alongside us? Or do we just need agreements with other counties first?
Oh, we have an SOQ in terms of the process that we go through and we're doing fine there as far as I'm concerned. I think that commitment to the turfing project at Cooley Field is very important. And that I believe is scheduled to happen in the next fiscal year. Is that correct?
It's in the CIP that the, the board approved in December. We will, I think, know more fully in May after the council and Board of Supervisors have made a determination on the CIP. If it becomes what we call green money, then we will be able to do that work, we hope, beginning after July one. Of twenty, what's that, twenty five? Is this twenty five? Yeah, after twenty five.
And sorry, if I may, I just, if this is a direction that the board would like to commit to in the future. I do think that some sort of understanding and verbal commitment with, with a tag on whenever we want to implement it. I think will help to garner interest, especially in some of those programs where we may be concerned about participation. So that they can see it coming and the schools can gather interest within their schools so that we can be prepared.
So are you suggesting that our investment in Cooley Field would be our signal to our other divisions that we're moving in that direction?
I, I mean, I think that would help tremendously, yes.
And I think the board has approved Cooley Field for several years now, but last year, I believe it was taken out of the CIP. By the counting, and then the board put it back in again, and now it's coming up for review again. So, so that facility is central to being able to do it because there's not enough room in the schedule at Warner Stadium.
Mrs. Donner?
So I have a question about the transportation. And from what I understand, we're having difficulty getting transportation just for our students to get to and from school. And I've also heard that we have trouble getting transfer, bus drivers to sign up to transport to VHSL. We had, we didn't have transportation for ship clubs. And so I'm just curious about what would be the solution for something like that if we're already struggling with transportation for what's existing? How would that shift two years from now? And, you know, are there opportunities? To have to give an incentive to drivers to, to drive? Because from what I've also heard is that as a driver, there is no shift differential or added pay to drive. It is just what your normal pay is, and so that's not really an incentive to continue driving. Past where you could be home by five o'clock instead of home by seven or eight. So maybe Mr. Baker, Mr. Snipes. Is there some, something creative that we can do that would actually incent drivers to support after school activities? You know, ship, which we have an eight hundred thousand dollar, you know, grant for in addition to some of supporting our other. Our other sports.
Mrs. Donner, Dr. Snipes will answer initially. We did have a significant discussion about this actually in senior leadership this morning. And the need for exactly what you've just described. Mr. Snipes?
Yes, ma'am. As Dr. Harris said, we discussed it. An incentive pay shift differential, I think, would be significant in enticing some of our drivers to take on additional runs. So that, including if we are to, we looked at also making contracts a little longer. So that, that would incentivize them as well. So you're correct that those, there are two opportunities there for the school division.
So just, just to wrap up, let's wrap up lacrosse because we do have a lot of other things to get to. For this budget cycle. There's no, other than Cooley Field and the CIP, there's, there's no money that we would need to add to our current budget. In order to potentially move forward with this in the next two years.
That's correct.
There's a lot of one time costs that we'd want to invest in at the appropriate time and the purchase of equipment and other things. But those would be one time costs rather than ongoing costs, which are different, obviously.
So is it fair to say that WJCC is committed to organizing lacrosse to start in a couple of years?
So the, so the purpose of bringing it before the board tonight and talking about potential cost is really to look for the direction of the board. And, and your potential support of moving forward with it in two years, in two years' time, year after next.
So when do we address that?
Right now.
Well, if I, if I get a chance to vote, I would vote yay to move forward lacrosse and look at Cooley Field. And plan on opening local competition or wherever in twenty six, twenty seven.
Would, meaning with other local school divisions, would that cut some of the costs? For, for example, on officials and maybe, you know, we'd be sharing some of, some things.
So, so I don't think it would affect the officiating costs, but it would impact the transportation costs. And it would make the transportation challenges, I wouldn't say nonexistent, but it certainly would alleviate some of those challenges.
There we go. Yeah, I'm in support of it. I really think the key to kind of this budget is, is the stuff we deal with when we deal with bus drivers and support staff. Like if we don't get that right, I really see this moving forward in the right way. That makes it sense, makes sense. I also think. It's up to the county to also want to do their, their actual capital improvement projects on time. I'm happy to stick that to them as well. I think it's important that they don't keep bumping these things if, we can't keep improving facilities and asking for new programs. And this is the stuff our constituents want, so I'm happy to do it. I just really think it really takes a lot more collaboration to just us like committing, right? It really does go beyond, how do we as a board talk to other school boards when we're at conferences or when we get chances to speak with them? Because we should encourage them to think about these type of things as well, because I want our students to play, people who are close by. And then part of that differential, I think they're like driving fifty miles is not, I think I deem it safe with students in a bus, you know. Especially, it just seems like a far kind of drive, so I feel like there needs to be a higher incentive for that overall. If you're driving fifty miles with a busload of students, like there should be a lot more incentive pay. So I, I would not want to get into a car with it like that myself as an adult, so I can't imagine wanting to drive it, you know, so.
I think Dr. Kiefer wants to make a comment.
Sure, with, with the board's desire to, to move this forward into twenty six, twenty seven, I think you could anticipate. As we get into the CIP process and the next year, a request to look at turfing fields at the three high schools. As well as some additional personnel pieces, maybe the shift of the athletic director from eleven month to twelve month, an addition of a stipend. So in this budget cycle, not necessarily additional expenses, but we would want to bring back to you, based on some of the things we highlighted this evening. Some additional needs as we continue to move this forward.
Right. I mean, I think it's easy to sit in this room right now without committing any dollars to say. Yeah, hypothetically, let's have lacrosse. I just, I just want to make sure we're not signaling something that we can't actually follow through with. We're, you know, right now, we're about to ask for thirteen million dollars above last year's budget. So when next year, I don't know what next year's going to look like, is this going to be the most pressing expense?
It's only a quarter million dollars.
What?
I mean, the expense is not that high. I mean, if you do, my next question would have been like, how much of the turfs, you know, like that's really the other parts. Like I want that to be done. I want that to be used by other sports, right? Like there's other stuff that goes in this that's actually a better investment, not just for lacrosse. So I, I think that's, what I had is that, I also believe that, you know, when we're talking about the next cycle, there's a lot more that the general somebody will be doing. The next two years to go about changing the formulas, like just because we're lifting all these things and talking about the new requirements, that's important. But there is a big movement to move towards to changing the formula to change LCI's for us and the thought of that work. So I think like, you know, it's a big ask now, but like in the future, we could be talking about something that's way different and we're kind of sending ourselves for something that's not successful, so.
I just want to signal to the viewing public that we can commit to interest into pursuing this as far as it, as far as it takes us. And if, if we can bring it to fruition in two years, I don't think anyone would, would be opposed to that. But we, we don't, I don't want to signal an absolute commitment with dollars to this happening in twenty twenty seven. Because I don't think we, I think there are a lot, a lot of steps that need to be taken and we're, I think we're committing to taking those steps one at a time. And seeing how far we get, but not necessarily to the end result in a, in a given fiscal year. Is that, Mrs. Donner?
Yeah, I think my, I'm not opposed to lacrosse fundamentally. My concern is that we have a lot of things that are academic and that is our first priority is academics. And so for me, I would need to see as those budgets come up, what are the trade offs? Because based on my math, it's about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for those two. Sport for both girls and boys, and that is two potential, that is at least one academic position. Or that could be two aides, and so I think you have to look at it holistically. And what is our main purpose and what is, you know, a nice to have? So I'm, I'm open to us taking this. So I I'm open to us taking the steps to see where we land, but I I agree with Mrs. Um, Ortego, that, or, sorry, sorry, Chair Ortego, that we need to just take it step by step.
I don't disagree with that, but I mean, when you talk about the student education, but there's also student life. I mean, an opportunity for scholarships. I mean, it's just not just, I mean, we can add administrators and FTEs, EEs for that and FTEs for that. And of course, the students benefit from that, but with, I'm talking about, you know, a whole rounded experience in high school.
Right.
I mean, sports is a big thing.
Right, and we do have sports. I I think that at this point, maybe we should move on to some of the other portions because we had a very, very large presentation that, um, exceeded just lacrosse. So if if there are further questions, obviously submit SBQs. The budget process is not over. We can continue the discussion. But I think for now, we should move on. Thank you. Are there any questions related to anything other than lacrosse?
Mr. Riffle, I do a question. Um, I'm gonna start looking through some of the requests that aren't related to the standard of quality or service, or just kind of nice things to have as we just put it a second ago. Um, I don't see the real difference in adding one um, HR person along with that extra cost. It doesn't change your percentage, like, into the point six, it's still five point eight. So what's the need for adding one? How does it change my life as a board member? And for, I'm looking at human resources coordinator, um, hundred thousand dollars. And there's an additional cost of ninety eight thousand dollars. I just want to make that make sense for, that's a quarter million bucks almost right there. That's point, doesn't even change your graph as much, like, you didn't, you, yeah, it doesn't make sense, my question?
Not to me at this moment. I don't know what slide you're on.
Yeah, it's not, they're not numbered for us, so it's hard to, so it's human resources coordinator. I think it's.
It's number thirty seven.
And the the slide number on top of it.
Oh, I don't have it like that. It's like PDF file.
It's fifty-two slides and then.
Sure. Thirty-seven, and then there's two slides below it. Um, I just want to kind of have the rationale between that. Because if the whole goal is to get to that one point five, you're not making any movement towards that at all with one coordinator.
Mr. Baker, do you want to speak to that?
Uh, well, we we're not able to request, you know, seven or eight additional HR people to get us up to that higher ratio. So we started with a request of just one. That we're so far below the recommended ratio of of a minimum of one point five HR people per one hundred employees.
I'll also say that over the course of the last several years, as we have, uh, looked to add positions to the school division, we've really focused on, um, positions at the building level that have a a a direct positive impact and correlation with students and and providing service to students. I think in this particular set of requests, both from human resources on the finance side and then operationally, we feel like those requests are in line with our ability to continue to provide strong service for employees relative to HR, service of our buildings relative to operation, and then some of those financial transactions that have continued, uh, to get higher and higher. So I think from our perspective administratively, these are particularly important in order for us to maintain a strong school division overall.
Sure, I appreciate the answer. I just don't see your population of employers growing as much as the need to to have that. Doesn't change in the graph that you're kind of, to be just saying that, like, this is the standard where it's, you're not going to make a change in your standard. So I just want it to make sense. And then that moving into that same kind of same area would be the financed accounting positions. Um, I just, those are kind of nice to have for us as the board, but how does it affect the whole general? That's another, you know, if we're talking about, now we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. Now, we're four hundred thousand dollars now. That's off the top. So I I just, I don't know what slide number it is. It's additional, but Miss Yuen definitely knows because it's her sector.
Your question is the rationale for that?
Just want to know the rationale for both these. There's no, like, chart that says I have to do this. It's just, it's just a part of our goals for organizational efficiency and effectiveness. And we as a board get to choose what that actually is, so.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for from the board is some sense of what the whole board might prioritize from what we've brought forward. These are real needs. Um, staff are under considerable pressure, workload's increasing, and, uh, both departments have been operating under par staffing-wise for a significant number of years. Uh, there's other positions as well we should have, we could have brought forward. These are ones we prioritize centrally to to help with literally our daily work and getting things done. Um, but again, the board has a lot to consider tonight, some that are required by SOQ and some that aren't. Um, certainly would like your perspective on the additional behavior specialists for the elementary school. Continuing with the staff for the restorative center, the two pieces of that. Um, there's been a lot of feedback from our school community with regard to the need for some other support in this area. So there's some school-based, there's some central-based, but there's a lot of things that we really just need you to to reflect on and consider. And if not tonight, certainly in in the weeks ahead, our two-by-one sessions really start to talk through where you want to prioritize the ask as a school board.
Mrs. Donner?
I I think on the, uh, the supports at the elementary school, having visited Matoka, where they have created a room for children to go to when they need a little bit of a of a timeout and a support, right? That has been really, really successful, at least anecdotally, and I know that that school counselor is going to start to pull the data. And so I think we have a pilot where we can see how that is important. Um, and so I think that is a place where I do believe we need investments, and particularly as, you know, we have been, it has been highlighted about our, um, discipline rates and and how they can be disproportionate. You know, a lot of that starts in elementary school, and if you're getting suspended there, um, right, that just continues to build going forward. And so I think it's really important for us to address their behaviors in the beginning and have those children have a positive experience in school and understanding how to successfully operate in our schools so that that just makes it easier as we go down the line. So I think to me, that's a place that's really important, and continuing the restorative center as we've visited those, that program and seeing how impactful it has been for our students and how it's given, you know, us as a board options in different situations, I think it's important.
And just to piggyback off of that, I had a question for Dr. Brown. Um, on slide eighteen, you're talking about the elementary behavioral support, and you had forty-five percent of elementary behavioral referrals at kindergarten and first grade. Do you have any numbers for previous years to see how that's ranks? Is it better, are we getting worse, or are, is that number, I guess, getting better or worse?
In terms of the distribution amongst grade levels? I don't have the data in front of me, but I can confidently say and get the data for you that it's pretty consistent that our K-one levels often take up the bulk of our elementary referrals, and you'll actually start to see it decline as you go from third to fourth to fifth grade.
As the students start, I guess, getting used to being in school during the day when they haven't been previously?
Yes, sir. And then also, it's it's students that come in at kindergarten, first grade that have have not had previous schooling experience. Uh, sometimes it takes them, uh, a lot of time to build up the stamina to to go through an entire instructional day. And as we go through our our child study, MTSS, childified processes, that can take a few, few weeks. But in the meantime, they're continuing to demonstrate behaviors, um, that require additional support. And so by the time you get into third, fourth, fifth grade, they start to build that stamina, regulation strategies that would limit or prevent behaviors from resulting in disciplinary action.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know we we're trying, trying to be mindful of time, and we've already, I think, exceeded our, um, we're into our closed session time. But I I also don't want to, this is what we're here for, so I don't want to, um, cut off the important discussion. Are there the other questions? I know it's, we also need some time to digest it a little bit, so there might be SBQs or follow-up conversations or we might bring questions from tonight into the into the February meeting, um, because it's, there's no way to digest it all and then have all the questions lined up. I have a couple, I hope, quick ones, um, that maybe we can just check off. Maybe not. The the comp study, if we implement the recommendations of the comp study, I believe the recommendation tonight was to only implement one-third. Is that, is only a third of that incorporated in the final number?
That's correct. And again, that's another consideration for the board. Do you want to go further than than doing it over three years? Do you want to implement everything at once? Do you want to take it over two years? Do you want to introduce it over three years? Because the comp study told us how far we were behind everyone else. And so that's, again, something to really consider as a board to decide what you want to do. We're trying to take a conservative approach and and say this is one way of doing it, but really, the board will determine where we go with it.
And and can we, if we try to simplify it, say we were to do the whole thing, this all at once, would that result, because that's a lot of money, so would that result in most, most if not all teachers and employees receiving higher compensation than right now?
Absolutely.
Without, without an additional raise, just the, just implementing the comp, the compensation study in and of itself?
I believe that's an accurate statement. Mr. Baker, Dr. Kiefer, do you want to add to that?
I I want to be careful, though, because the the three percent, I don't, I don't think we want to leave the three percent on the table.
No, no, I'm not suggesting leaving that. I'm saying before you would even consider three or more percent, would everybody get a bump just from implementing the comp, the the comp study recommendations?
I'm not a hundred percent confident saying a hundred percent of the people would. I I would, I would, there is specific information potentially for each employee related to their position on the scale, related to their, uh, their ratio in terms of the compra analysis. Uh, we have begun to review those spreadsheets from Bolton and are looking at that in terms of implementation of their recommendations. I I'm not comfortable saying a hundred percent.
And to elaborate on that, there are some employees who are paid at the market value right now or and somewhere below it. So not everyone might benefit from the study. But they will benefit from the three percent.
And benefit is.
Increase.
I under, right, I understand what you mean, but benefit is a di, an interesting word, because if you're already paid at market value, you're not at a disadvantage now. So you don't, it's not a benefit that everybody needs.
That's correct. And and really, the study brings us up to to compete with everyone else in certain parts of the scale.
Right, um, my concern would be if we were to break it up over two or three years and we start with one group, would future boards then have the the opportunity or or to say, actually, that's not our priority anymore? And then we've, we've only done it for a third of the stuff.
Well, I think the study is fresh now. The information is real. If you wait to implement parts of it, it's going to cost more money than it will do today because you'll have to go back and get another analysis done to bring it up to to speed every year potentially. So you, as soon as after this year, the information becomes old. I mean, the ideal is to do it all at once. However, it it creates quite a significant ask from our localities.
But it would potentially lower our percentage ask next year. I mean, it would be a big one, but hopefully we're then at market value.
Potentially, it's one time to get us to where we want to be, and then you start looking at just general raises that that are offered across the board.
Right, okay. Um, and then I don't, I know we get, we have to look at the time, transportation staff versus, um, bus drivers.
We've been, we've been discussing that at length as well and looking at options to make sure those who are driving a bus daily in addition to the regular work are compensated appropriately for that. So we're looking at some options. We'll bring those back to the board for consideration.
Okay. Mr. Riffle?
Guys, I'm, this might be an SPQ at this point, um, but I'm interested to know. Um, I I understand the requirements for us to to go through some of the positions that we have to get, um, that I'm looking at, that that kind of other considerations kind of part. Um, I just worry that we're putting out too many full-time positions that will not be filled. And I just think it might be best for the board to approach it from like a, well, this is what we would like, and then be willing to cut that in half at some point, because I I just don't see us hiring, like, one to nine behavioral people. It it just sounds like support for special education, which we know is a harder area to kind of grapple with. I I just understand, like, from a short time here, I get it, but there's a level of, like, we know this is an area which we struggle, everyone's struggling with for hiring. It's, I just don't want us to get our, like, let's put all this money in this pot, and then we could be spending it somewhere else that's more effective right now, so.
I think it really is a a budget of need, and there's a lot to grapple with in in the weeks ahead. And and the, for the board to really review it, prioritize it, and then have those discussions in two-by-ones and come back to the table again to determine what's in the budget. We only have so much time, because Miss Yuen was sitting here wondering, will I be able to present a budget on February eighteenth? And so this is conversation and analysis we've got to do pretty quickly as 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 you move forward as as a board with with Dr. Kiefer starting next, uh, next month. Dr. Kiefer, anything to add right now?
No, I agree, and if 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 we need to add time to the February fourth meeting for the purpose of sort of budget workshop as well, we can do that. I think right now it's it's scheduled as a work session, but a general work session. But if we need a a a third budget workshop, we we're, we can look at that.
And that would give you time to prioritize and really delve into it as in addition to our two-by-one sessions at the end of of this month.
I think we should probably plan on that if possible, because I think we we need to digest the information and then and then come back with questions and conversations with each other and really kind of hash out where we, where we want to go, because it's going to take, it's going to take a little more time. Does that sound fair enough?
Yes.
All right, so for tonight, because we're going to do that, and also feel free to do engage outside of this meeting. Please send in SBQs, get your information in between meetings, not just at meetings, so that when we hit hit the meetings, we we know exactly what we want to say and ask and and then tell.
And I would also ask, before we leave tonight, if there's something we haven't covered tonight in the budget work session that you feel we should have or was missing from the discussion that you think is a priority of the board, then we need to know that right away, because we would present that at the first February meeting. And generally, this is, this is how we 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 operate and and roll.
Yes, Mr. Riffle?
Oh, this is my ever asked, um, I mean, looking to do a school meals type program or is from scratch? I think it's important to be, maybe look at a pilot of that. I don't know, where I work, it's lingering on the hall that that's going to be coming to us in the next two years or so. I just want us to, like, kind of pilot it if we could, or even to see, like, an estimate of it, because I just really think it's important for us to kind of understand the board one time, and then we see it again in the future when it's required of us. I just think it behooves us to kind of understand that topic, and I think some of our students and parents and people in education really ask for a lot is better meal, so. I'm not saying, I'm under commit from the board to, like, do this, but I'd like to see, like, what would that look like at one school implementation of doing, like, a kitchen like that or something?
So is that a potential later presentation to the board after this budget? Not for this budget, obviously, but certainly to bring information, discuss it with the board at a later date.
I I will leave it to the board to decide, I guess. I I think there's interest from us for at any point to do that. I just, I just don't want to be the spokesman of, like, how that works. You're the superintendent and, you know, the chair, that's probably than that. So I just would like to see something like that in the future.
Well, I'm sure Dr. Kiefer can come back and revisit that with the board once we've got through this, this very detailed budget process for this year.
All right, so we need to take a quick break. Oh, no, I need to adjourn this budget work, so this budget work session is adjourned.